Thanks for coming, audience.
Welcome to the April ninth, two thousand twenty four work session and town board meeting. Would you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First item on the agenda is some actions. By the planning board, I really thought Doug might be here, but I think we'll just go through these one by one quickly. Or maybe not so quickly, but the first one is in regarding to. Robert Hopkins. Event center or holding events, I should say, in just one note, so everyone knows. And for the record, the address, the street number is wrong on both of these. It's it's actually two ninety eight instead of two eighty nine. But does anybody have any comments or thoughts on on the. Hosting on Neil hosting events at two ninety eight? Eloquent Road.
I think as we we discussed last time he was here, it's a a good use of the property within. The zoning it is secluded, it's next to the trail, so I don't have any objections to the. To the the special use permit and the recommendations from the planning board.
Okay, I concur.
All right, anyone else?
Okay.
Yeah.
I do have a question, and it's just my my memory isn't quite the same. I'm I'm okay with all that as well, but when once that place becomes active. Like any other venue, they're gonna have to either come to us or talk to us about going outside of. You know, hours of music and things like that, if they want to bring. If you want to bring music or something like that, like any any barwood or, you know, or other establishment, correct?
Yes. I don't know if this this special use permit.
It says no later than eleven P M.
Is gonna have limitations to that.
Like those are, those are what we would want to establish, right, by the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we're we're actually gonna have the public hearing there, so we'll hear what people say, and then we'll develop the special use after the public hearing. With things such as you're saying, Jim.
Okay.
I mean, that's a good point.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, and next is the same property, two ninety eight. Eloquent Road, Neil, well, Robert Hopkins, I know him as Neil. Is for a campground special use permit, any thoughts, comments?
Same.
Same thing?
Yeah.
Next is the property at four twenty Ole Anne. Ole Anne Road for the auto service repair special use permit. This is for Ron Barish. Any comments?
No, it was it was a auto repair facility that did painting, and now it's giving auto repair facility that's gonna offer undercoating, I think.
On the body and this.
Perfect mix.
It is in the proper zone, that the prop zone is in the proper location, so.
Okay. And next is the. Site plan review. For six hundred Ole Anne Road. I'll just read some of the, some of the notes that the planning board had mentioned. Is that it's owned by Harrison Kelly and restricted the facility facility to end at eleven P M. And Doug recommended that it doesn't need a work group, but we'll just talk about that in a minute. But. This is for the special use permit. And with and a site plan. Permit. We need to have a meeting and go through things such as fencing, and I spoke to Harrison, I'm surprised he's not here, to tell you the truth. We need to help go through things such as fencing and hours of operation and hours of construction and so on and so forth. And put that in the special use permit. I don't know, Doug, if you wanna chime in and mention anything to that effect?
At the at the planning board meeting, we didn't talk about hours of construction, we did talk a little bit about hours of. The site being opening, and there was discussion of possibly a fence to the south of the property, which he had. The planning board didn't have a strong opinion on whether it needed or not, so they said their their opinion was the buffer is fine for them. But obviously Harrison has indicated a willingness to do something additional.
I I did speak to Harrison, and he he actually said he was thinking offenses of different kinds, some board on board, some some just to delineate the.
So he is clearly thinking about the issues that you are thinking about and.
Yes, exactly.
Nailing down whatever you guys think is important, it's important.
Yeah.
You know, the planning board, we talked about a lot of things and couldn't get consensus on anything other than the hours.
Yes.
And in favor of the project.
So I would like to propose that. We get together and we go through the special use permits, some of these things will need to be put on the site plan, such as fencing. Others will just be part of the special use permit. And obviously, we're just setting the public hearing tonight, if we could do that, you know, in the next few weeks or so, that would be great. And I would ask if perhaps Councilman McCann could join me with that to meet with Harrison. And I'm sure his architects and so on, and go through all of those details.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that, I I know that the site plan, his proposed site plan has changed some since that first version we got, my understanding is. Permanently eliminated the outdoor driving range due to the need to include a septic system. Um, so, yeah, that sounds good, I'd also like to get out there and walk around.
Sure.
Just off off the top of my head, I think trees are are superior defenses in terms of. Blocking stuff, but let's see what where where he's, if we get out there and see where he's planning on putting the building and then have a better idea of how far away he is from the neighbor and.
Yeah. With an open mind, and you know, he's he was, I had a real nice discussion with him, he's pretty amicable to to do kind of. You know, within reason what we suggest.
Yeah.
And I think it could be a benefit to to everyone, to the neighbors, to the town, and to him.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Any other comments?
No, very good.
And then the actually, the next one is for the site plan review, which we've kind of both. Kind of covered both of those in one discussion, everyone agree, because does anyone have anything else to add?
Uh, just that. The the public hearing is in two weeks. Uh, and I don't know that I could make a meeting when I I don't wanna, you know. I wanna make myself available when you do have the meeting, I'm gonna be in Florida in two weeks. So as far as a public hearing, I don't know that there's anything I need to add to that. But if you two know when you're doing it, let me know, and if I can be available, I'd be more than happy to, and, uh, you know, take a walk around there.
Okay, all right, we'll keep everybody posted when we're meeting. Thank you both for that.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the local law to amend our building code. Section one sixteen dash eight dot nine for the C three commercial. Liz, do you have anything you'd like to? Tell us about this.
Um, no, this really was just a clarification. To allow outdoor uses in the C three and also. Outdoor C two uses, um, just to just to clarify, you know, which outdoor, which uses were outdoors and which ones are required to be in an indoor setting.
Anyone else have any comments?
Not on that.
Not on that. Okay. Next on the agenda is a temporary use permit. For the Holland Middle School to use the pool on June twenty first of this year. Chris is here tonight, you wanna give us a little background on this or whatever there is to say about it?
Yes, same as.
The same as. Yeah, it's worked well, right, in the past, no problems, no issues.
Hey, Chris, I don't have any issue with that, I think it's great, did the Holland Middle School, did they close up their pool?
Um, there are rumors that that is.
Okay.
There's there's a lot of. I I know Holland is struggling with. Their deficits.
Okay.
They're closing their pool.
Okay. But it's still open right now, I mean, it's.
Correct.
All right.
But they're they're looking to have an outdoor event.
They want to have.
They make me that type of thing. Yeah, Holland kids deserve to get out.
I'm I'm glad that the Holland kids aren't acting up, that's a very good change this generation compared to the previous generations.
Yeah.
For sure.
Previous gen.
Looking at you two gentlemen. You two, both of you.
All right, moving on, you kids.
I don't wanna say we were above the kids in Holland, but.
Next on the agenda.
Thanks for taking.
Dave to go to Birmingham, I think it is, no, Richmond. Richmond with the leaf truck, you wanna tell us, leaf sucker?
Yeah, this is not a vacation, it's not a very fun job to do, but in the interest of the taxpayers, we looked into having it transported there, cuz I have a current C D L. I can drive it and not be paid essentially, cuz I'm salary as opposed to having one of the employees do it. So this is the cheapest way to get it there. It has to go there and for about three months, and then I assume I will have to go back down there and bring it back home. But this is really the cheapest, most effective way to do it, and like I said, it's not fun to drive a little truck with no box on it. Very bumpy ride, so this is no vacation, but I'm glad to help out to save the cost.
Thanks, Dave, we appreciate that.
Thanks for the sacrifice.
Big steak at night or so.
Next on the work session agenda is the is the lighting projects for the highway senior center and adult daycare center, daycare center, you wanna tell us a little bit about that, Dave?
Yeah, Chuck, I had a chance to meet with Chuck about this already, we have just three areas left in our whole town. In inventory of lighting that haven't been changed over to LEDs, one is the highway department offices, just just where Liz is. Uh, the other is the senior center, and then the final one is the Aridout daycare center. On top of that, for the board members who've been here for a few years, our lighting at the pool for the. Nighttime games of baseball are all halogen lights, and it's gotten to the point where we can't get the bulbs anymore, so we had been cannibalizing them. To get by, but the board had intent on one at a time as we had funds, cuz they weren't cheap to start converting them over. So we found this rebate program through New York State and have a proposal. It's on a community first contract, so there's no bid requirements, it meets the piggyback. And pretty much by the time the highway is done installing this, this twelve thousand dollar job, if I'm right on that. Will only cost us three thousand, so I'd like to get this approved, and I wanna do it slow though, because if we did the whole twelve thousand in one. Bump, we could be in the negative for the budget for the year, so I wanna do one segment at a time, so we hopefully recover the rebate checks, so we aren't impacting the budget that. Heavy, so right now, my plan is to start with the baseball fields first, and then the highway garage next, and then move on to the senior center after. So it's just a project we can do in house, in the past, we have hired contractors to do this, and I think you'll see this is quite the savings to let the highway department do it ourselves. Um, but as long as you understand it has to wait for days where we're slow and.
Yeah.
We have time, so I just looking for approval, pre-approval, so that we can start slowly buying this and. Getting the rebates back.
Is this just because you can't get the halogen anymore?
Yeah, that's correct, right, it's old, they're almost like the shop style that you used to have in garages, um, just like a lit long thing. The bulbs aren't available, so literally, last time, warning helped us find enough to get through last season, and I'd explain it to the board at that time that. Going forward as they keep blowing, I would just keep moving the good bulbs over and replacing one. Because when we did this for the pickleball courts and the tennis courts, I believe it was about three thousand dollars to have them installed by a contractor each, so we did them one at a time. Or two at a time, I don't remember, Chuck, but they work amazing, so once we get through with this upgrade, it's gonna improve the baseball quite a bit.
And they're energy efficient.
Well, yeah, and oh, that's, I forgot to say, the according this according to the sales rep, that this investment of the town. Will pay for itself within three years, just in, uh, energy efficiency. And the big cost that Chuck knows is future maintenance, I mean, you know, you you don't, aren't constantly, right now, it's almost a full time job. At least it was when we had the Glee building of just changing ballast and light bulbs, uh, when we had Glee, it was literally. A full time job for the thousands of lights that we had for all of our facilities in town, so now that we've converted all to LED, it's great.
Yeah, absolutely, it's, we went through the entire Glee building and replaced every one of them.
That's correct, and again, you're not coming back with ladders and workers, um. Yeah, so we're lucky these programs are still out there, so I think we should take advantage of it. Uh, the only thing that would be left is some incidental buildings like West Falls Lodge that still have traditional lighting. But we can always look at them later, but pretty much this will take care of every one of our major facilities for the town, and the community pool will completely be LED then, so.
And you. Anticipate being able to catch them all this year.
Yeah, I like to. This approval tonight, I plan on ordering tomorrow the baseball ones and the highway garage ones to get this rolling, um. So like I said, my intent is to do them as fast as I can in segments, apply for the rebates, so that the money goes back into our current year budget. So that we don't get to, we're starting to get into the red with the buildings and grounds budget, cuz. Not that we're going to, but just to be smart about it.
Just so everyone knows, the money's coming out of buildings and grounds, like Dave.
Yeah, and also too, we can't get this rebate till we literally turn back in the old fixture and lights, so it's real strict, so. Yeah, so so basically, you buy all these bulbs, but you you don't get the rebate till you prove that you took out the old one.
Okay.
And they get it to destroy.
Cuz I was gonna ask if there would be anybody interested in the used fixtures.
This grant, we have to provide them with, they get it all back.
I'm sure they don't want anybody else using those fixtures.
That that's exactly right, we could put them on Ochs Internet.
They wanna.
Grant is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got it, I I didn't know either to till this, this is kind of new too, they kind of expanded the old nicer to grants, um.
So that's another reason why I wanna do it in stages, so we don't impact, because it'll take time to get the old ones down, take them back to that. A dealer that's selling it to us, and then hopefully they can turn the rebate check around quick. You know, there's a possibility we could run into the red in buildings by the end of the year, but like Supervisor Schneider said. We would understand if we had to dip into contingency because of that, but I'm trying to avoid doing that.
So i- in the proposal, I think you said the the grant or the rebate would come from Nice, but you also said, you said in this nicer.
Well, it's not nicer to, it's in the paperwork I gave you, that's who the grant's through, the the original nicer to was when we did the, I or the. Stonewall, I believe, so it's just a different program.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and the reason I was asking is I, Nice, I wasn't quite sure of how they operated, but if it was nicer to. Is is there a possibility of replacing those with any type of lamp that uses partial solar power and also getting a rebate or a grant from New York State?
I haven't looked into that, it's a good question, though, I'm not sure with like the baseball lights would have the juice. You know, those are pretty high power. I I don't know that answer, Councilman, if you'd like, I could look into it, I guess, I.
I I think, um, just to add that, uh, if you're willing to to do it. Uh, we we will be able to get points in the both climate smart community and clean energy community, um. Programs for this, but I think one of the things.
Lights?
Well, no, for installing LED lights.
So what we're doing right is.
So what we're doing, but but we are going to have to document it, so first of all, we're just gonna have to list all the lights remaining, have a document that we can submit. And says you've looked at all the lights, the ones that are remaining in the town are these, 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 and then.
Oh, sure, is that, so you're saying you'd like this done when we're doing that?
Yeah, so if we can, um, I mean, we should talk to Jason Kulasevsky, I I think you've got most of what you need. But just so we can put it together and get the credit for it, because that'll help us, we're, I mean, we are on the cusp of a lot of funding and all these points.
Councilman, and I and I'm not ruling out us also looking in West Falls Lodge and looking at the rest, I just didn't have time to go around to the outbuildings yet, like. I'm not sure if we done West Falls Library, but that might fall under the New York Ford anyway, I don't think we did, did we?
What, the outside, the outside lights?
Did we do them, um, years ago?
I don't think so.
Yeah, we do have some more town properties, I just haven't had a chance, but if you'd like me to try to identify everything, we could.
Well, to, yeah, to be clear, we don't have to replace everything, they just want us to to look at all of the remaining lights and and have an inventory. Which is again, like a one page list of the lights, and then submit it, and we can move forward with it, but if we do that in parallel, then we can get. Like four, eight points, eight points, depending on how many we're replacing.
Sounds like an easy project, can you just email to me, so you literally want us to count the quantities in the existing ones?
I I've, just to get. What I think we should, what we should do is, yeah, okay, I think we should have a call, you, me, and Jason Kulasevsky, who knows this bet left and right. He's probably got a form for this that he can give to us, I don't wanna speak, cuz it's the first time I I'm thinking about this, but. Uh, if we get him on the call, you know him, yeah.
Yes, yeah, and again, I'm all for this, I just didn't know, so, yeah, why not take credit for something we were already gonna do, so that's a good thing.
Yep.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome, and I and I will look into the solar, I assume. That would only be for those baseball lights, but I'm not sure where else you you're talking about with the solar.
I don't know how often those lights are used, if they're used every day during the summer.
No, 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 that's just Friday night lights.
So, right, so maybe that's.
Literally.
So maybe that that might be a reason why solar might work better there, cuz if they're.
I don't have a problem.
Throughout the week and only use it.
You know, there's a sales rep that'll tell you, sell you anything, I don't have a problem looking into it, I mean, I, absolutely, well, I'll let you know.
I'm not looking to buy anything, I'm looking, you know.
No, I'm saying, I'm sure there is.
Free your.
I just never have looked into it, I'd be glad to do it.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll be shooting an email to the fair board on that.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is the fireworks contract and the fireworks permit, this is an agreement with, um. The Skylighters for seventeen thousand six hundred dollars for the fireworks this year. Anybody have any comments?
Oh, exciting stuff.
Yes, it is.
Is it about the same as we sent last year, I didn't look.
It went up, uh.
Typical of, yeah, that was a good display last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then there's the permit for the fireworks. Sure, anybody have any thoughts or questions on that?
Yeah, well, it's a pyrotechnic.
You good, Jim?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm just looking at the name of the pyrotech.
Oh.
Did you see Jelly Roll?
Yeah, a couple nights ago.
Oh, really, oh, good.
Jay Roll.
Jelly Rolls?
Jelly Roll. Who's on Idol yesterday, so it's Chief Pyrotech.
Is he a country singer too?
Yes, he is.
Man of many, many hits.
That's what I'm thinking, you don't wanna hear.
Okay, okay, all right. Uh, I see Harrison, uh, joined us, Harrison, we discussed the the, um, special use permit. For six hundred Ole Anne Road, and in the end of it, the special use permit and the site plan review. In the end of it, we're certainly gonna put the, uh, public hearing on the agenda tonight for the site plan review, but we would like to get together with you, as you and I had discussed, Councilman McCann, myself, you. And whomever you want, your design professionals, whomever you want, just to go through. Specifics such as where exactly you want fences, what types types of fences they are. Touch on lighting, touch on hours of operation, touch on construction, hours of operation. About anything we can think of, just so there's no confusion and no problems, so, uh, I don't know if you have anything you wanna add or tell us. So. Okay. All right. Next, we'll go into the regular meeting.
Chuck, can I just real quick, I had a question, I didn't wanna.
Oh, sure, sure.
Um, I don't see, and I I should brought this up earlier, uh, the rezone on our agenda for tonight, we're not, we're not gonna set a public hearing for that yet for Davis Road. Refresh my memory. Where do we end up with that?
There was a discrepancy in the deed description, the assessor and I went, looked at the survey, we looked at the county maps, we looked at the deed, and there's a gap. The property doesn't close up, so his surveyor has everything back in his hands and is supposed to present something else.
Gotcha, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, can I have a motion to approve the March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four minutes?
So.
Motion by Ray, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jim, any comments or discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next is Audience One. Do any of you fine people have anything you'd like to address the board with? Brad? Nothing? Elizabeth?
Nothing, no, okay.
Under unfinished business. We'll start with the application from Robert Neil Hopkins. I'll read the motion, but I'm going to recuse myself. Can I have a motion to approve holding a public hearing on April twenty second, two thousand twenty four, five seventy five Oakwood Avenue? Uh, East Aurora, New York at seven P M regarding the special use permit. Um, for the event center at the property at two ninety eight Eloquent Road in West Falls.
So moved.
Motion by, who was that? Joe?
Yep.
Number second.
Second.
By Luke, any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I recuse that. Post, motion carried, I don't know if I have to recuse myself.
You can abstain.
And set a public hearing.
Next is the special use permit for the campground at the same piece of property, two ninety eight Eloquent Road. Can I have a motion to approve a public hearing on April twenty second, two thousand twenty four, at five seventy five Oakwood Avenue? East Aurora, New York at seven P M regarding a campground at two ninety eight Eloquent Road.
So moved.
Motion by Ray, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recuse myself. Motion carried. Next is the special use permit for four twenty Ole Anne Road. Can I have a motion to approve holding a public hearing on April twenty second, two thousand twenty four, at five seventy five Oakwood Avenue? East Aurora, New York at seven P M regarding a special use permit for the property at four twenty Ole Anne Road.
So moved.
Motion by Luke, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a public hearing on the site plan for six hundred Ole Anne Road. Can I have a motion to approve holding a public hearing on April twenty second, two thousand twenty four, at five seventy five Oakwood Avenue, East Aurora, New York at seven P M? Regarding the site plan review at the property at six hundred Ole Anne Road.
So moved.
Motion by Ray. Second, second by Luke. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a local law. Uh, regarding a a little change in the C three commercial. Uh, part of our code, can I have a motion to set a public hearing? On the twenty second of April, two thousand twenty four, at seven P M located at the Town of Aurora Municipal Center. Five seventy five Oakwood Avenue regarding changes in the town code, chapter one sixteen, section sixteen dash eight dot nine, the C three.
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I? Motion by Joe. Can I have a second? Second by Ray. Second by Luke. Okay. Comments or discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Onto new business. Next on the agenda. Was the pool use, the temporary use permit? Can I have a motion to approve the temporary use permit for the Howland School? Uh, I don't have the date in front of me because.
The twenty first.
Thank you, Jim. On June twenty first, two thousand twenty four.
So moved.
Motion by Jim. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor? Next on the agenda. Is the uh leaf vacuum system. Can I have a motion to approve Highway Superintendent? To transport truck three twenty two to Richmond for the installation of the leaf vacuum system.
So moved.
Motion by Luke. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion?
Only if he doesn't enjoy it.
All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the LED lights that we just discussed. Can I have a motion to approve the replacement of the exterior lighting? Uh, as listed for a total cost of twelve thousand eight hundred and thirty one dollars and ninety eight cents. With the eligibility of a nine thousand two hundred and seventy dollar rebate. Um, to be paid out of uh buildings and grounds.
So moved.
Motion by Jim.
And I will second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion?
That won't, I'm assuming that won't impact the baseball schedule at all, right? Perfect. Awesome.
Any other comments? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Next is the fireworks contract with the Skylighters of New York. Can I have a mo- motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the agreement with the Skylighters of Western New York for the July third fireworks display? At a cost of seventeen thousand six hundred dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Second by Luke. Comments or discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Next is the permit. Can I have a motion to grant? The permit for the uh for the fireworks on July third as per New York State law?
So moved.
Motion by Ray. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Comments or discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Next. Is a request from Kathleen Moffett. Can I have a motion to appro- to approve using debt reserve funds to make a forty five thousand dollar principal? Payment and a one thousand six hundred and sixty five dollar interest payment to Green County Commercial Bank?
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Next is a request from Chris. Can I have a motion to increase lines A zero zero dash two zero five two dash zero 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 dash. Zero 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 and line A zero zero dash seven one eight six dash zero four one one dash zero 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 zero. Both in the amount of three hundred and twelve dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Jim. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. And next is the uh plow truck, right? Can I have a motion to approve payment for Colden, to Colden Enterprises in the amount of thirty six thousand eight hundred and one dollars and thirty two cents? For the repair of the Western Star Plow.
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. Comments or discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. Under communication. We have the March two thousand twenty four reports for the senior center, the town clerk, town clerk tax. Town clerk water, garbage services, and the supervisors report. And along with that, we have a a uh. Communication from our comp alliance, who obviously handles our compensation. We received notification from our. From them that we will receive a refund of two thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. Um, so I want to thank everybody for keeping safety first and and uh and having a big part of this, so thank you all. Next on the agenda, business from board members. Start with Ray.
Um, open space committee, I think I mentioned it a couple of uh meetings ago. We plan on taking a field trip. Pun intended, to Majors Park South on the twenty first of April at one PM. So that's a Sunday at one PM. I think you were interested, but what we're planning on doing is marking the trails at Majors. Establishing and marking the trails and then also leading up to the trail, that wide open field. We plan on putting several posts. Dave suggested instead of T posts, putting in four by fours, so.
Here's pressure treated.
And then you're also willing to do the signs to go on there.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So installing those, putting that so that it's a lead up to where the trails are on the southern part. Um, so you know, it should be an effective way of, you know, people being able to traverse.
What do you even park the trails with, Ray?
They're little.
Tags?
Yeah. Probably the trees, more than likely. I mean, that's what you see in most parks marking trails, so.
They're, correct me if I'm wrong, but they were designed by the um EA Design Club.
Yeah, Blue, Blue Devil Design.
Oh, really?
They authorized that last year.
Yeah, so the high school kids will, they got their little logo on them, so the kids who worked on them will, in perpetuity be able to go back there and see what they did.
What do you think, Ray, about a map for that trail?
Well, it's interesting you said that because the map was circulated. Dale did start on that. We're also going to have um, you know, barcodes so that you can um. Click on that and you'll get a map on your phone as well. And um. One of the suggestions was to ensure the fact that people know where they are and um with the orientation. Is to also call like Casanova Creek, so be a little bit more detailed. You know, we gotta decide what the right level of information is that we uh want to put on there, including you are here. So you know, you would be oriented uh based on the location. The only other thing uh is, and I thank you guys for putting those cones there. To prevent certain people from parking up near where the kiosk is, but I don't know if there's a more elegant solution to that. As opposed to having, you know, eight, ten cones in that area.
No parking sign and the east, east Aurora police can.
Yeah. I I don't know. I mean, if. Ballack?
Ballard?
Ballard, that's what it.
Expensive and kind of out of place there. I mean, it's meant for parking lots, I'm not sure with.
Maybe when we go up there.
Yeah, you know what, take a look at when you guys do your tour, anything you guys want to do. It seems it's just one person for some reason. We've talked to them, maybe they've stopped now that the cones, so maybe after the cones are gone.
Effective deterrent. But so, so again, that's the twenty first. Hopefully we'll have good weather and have to wear hip waders.
Just to add to it, we did install the kiosk the other day.
Okay, I didn't go down there.
The the final parts, the Boces will be coming to put on, so it turned out really good, so hopefully it'll be all ready for you for that event. But if you get a chance, go check it out. Don't mean to jump ahead on my turn, but.
Great.
You can take my turn. If I I I could be out of town two weeks from now, uh as we discussed and uh. Let's see if I can follow the online.
Okay.
Oh, but like draconian background, so you don't get jealous, you know, like we used to when Jim would go down there.
Thank you, Jim. Luke?
Nothing tonight.
I was real quick, this was the second month of uh sending out ZBA notifications via the Code Red system. And every time I've done the map, there's been folks in that uh. Circle that participate in the Code Red system, so we're getting more more hits on people being notified of matters before the ZBA. And thank you Martha for sending those to me, so I can send out the Code Reds and that's it. Well, I take care of adding public hearings to that.
The ones for next meeting.
Yeah, we haven't set a policy, but I guess we can do it. But yeah, we should. I mean, why not use Code Red as much as we can? I agree. All right, we'll uh work on getting uh public hearings on that too. Thanks, Luke. It's summer, you know.
No, it is not. Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
And um, I have nothing tonight.
Oh, and just real quick, Chris, I hear there's good news on your uh front. I hear it being congratulated. You're you got a uh ring on there? When when did this happen? Congratulations.
Next is audience two, an opportunity to address the town. Concerning any topics, and if and if anyone would like to come and address the board, please step up to the mic and give us your name. Anyone online? No. Okay. We'll move on to staff reports. Liz? Nothing? Dave?
On the NACs event we had yesterday, um, because it snowed on Friday, there was no way we could park on any of the lawns over there, so we had to scramble. Um, did a great job and we had over a thousand cars parked safely without any incidences. So I just want to say the highway really worked hard last night till seven o'clock to get everybody in and out of there. Um, I think probably about thirty five hundred people were there. Uh, between people that were there for the event and also the whole field was full of people too. They were just there to find a good spot to look, so it was really uh crowded. But again, we worked really hard and got everybody in and out of there, so it went well. That's it.
Dave, were they able to um keep that parking just to people that tickets or is it pretty much open to everybody?
Well, yes and no. I mean, you can only enforce so much because it is a public park. Um, what we did was if they didn't have a ticket, we sent them down towards the polo end, which would be the farther from there, so yes and no. Um, just curious. Yeah, again, we were kind of surprised how many people just came there, which was fine, because there was a ticket gate. So there was no way they could get into the main festival. But so yeah, pretty much over by the polo fields, we kept the general public, so we were able to accommodate everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
No one got stuck there, right?
Well, we 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 never left.
We, the whole road turned into a parking lot. We did it as a one lane road closure like we had planned. Uh, went off totally without a hitch. In fact, we had a lot of compliments from people. So literally, if you went, it was kind of, I wish somebody took pictures, because it was pretty neat how he did it. Uh, literally the whole perimeter, a thousand cars lined up, so took a lot of work and effort to get them all to park straight and. Go in the right direction when they left, because because it was just one lane. But yeah, again, challenging event. I doubt I'll ever have to do it again, so I'm glad it came off good.
Another hundred years.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave. Chris?
Uh, today was our opening day for resident registration for our school programs, so. So visited for our office. Uh, Hamlet Park Day Camp is totally full. Um, the JP Nicely Camp is currently filling. I think there's a little bit of that nostalgia of wanting to be at Hamlet. So I think over the next week or so, we'll see our satellite day camp. Fill up. Uh, students are are filling, many classes are full, so it's.
Good. Good. Doug? Okay. Thank you. Brad? All right. Next, can I have a motion to approve the abstract?
So moved.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any comments or discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. And can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Ray. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you all. Have a great evening.